I'm going to call the City Council Caucus to Order for July 11th, 2016. We have under original consideration this evening, 13 items. Item number one on the agenda, if the clerk would please read.
Item number one, under original consideration. An ordinance amending Chapter 236, license taxi cab operations within the city, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing on July 25th, 2016.
Without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply to New York State for funds for WQIP disinfection project.
And that was discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution to extending the moratorium on taxi medallions.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply to New York State for funds for a Mohawk Harbor Visitor Center and Vessel Dockage.
And that was discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution endorsing the Museum of Innovation and Sciences Vale Park Project.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Vale Park Partnership.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution requesting New York State to impose stringent enforcement of fireworks laws.
That was also discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution requesting Schenectady County legislators to repeal the law allowing sale of fireworks in Schenectady.
Discussed in committee. Roll call vote. Okay, very good. Thank you. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 129 Prospect Street to Capital Region Land Bank.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the sale of 526 Page Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the sale of 401 Brandywine.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the sale of 507 Page Street.
And that was discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1839 Albany Street.
And that was discussed in committee, without objection on consent. And then we have one item under contract and supply, if the clerk would please read.
Item number 14, under contract and supply, a resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract for the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course improvements.
And that was discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus meeting. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn Mr. Ferrari, seconded by Mr. Kosher. All those in favor, aye. We are adjourned. I will now call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, July 11th, 2016. And I'll ask that you rise for invocation from Lynn Gilgore of the Lund Resource Center of the First Reformed Church of Schenectady.
God of all, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together today to do the work that makes this city a community. May our conversations with one another be gentle, may our disagreements be civil, may our intentions be honorable, and we ask that you would guide and direct this meeting so that it is reflective of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. For good work to do, for goals to work toward together, and for noble people to do this work, we are grateful. Amen.
And I will ask Boy Scout Troop 54 from Rotterdam to start us at the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And if the clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Kosher.
Here.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Ferrari.
Here.
Mr. Palamene.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Mutiveren.
Present.
Ms. Parazo.
I am present. And approval of the minutes from June 27th, 2016. Can I have a motion? Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Kosher. All those in favor, aye. If the clerk would please read communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, July 11th, 2016. Under official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated July 11th, 2016. A letter from Chris Wallin, City Engineer, dated July 11th, 2016 recommending the award of Schenectady Municipal Golf Course Improvement Contract to Intergolf. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
Thank you, and we'll move on to committee reports. Ms. Porterfield.
Just wanted to report on the 2016 Recreational Advisory Commission's park recommendations, which parks were recommended to have playground equipment done and also what there's been some money set aside for benches. Carey Street Park, there's been $27,680 allocated. Land and Terrace Park, $22,741.78. South Avenue Park, $32,534.17. Vale Park, $40,139.10. Wallingford Park and Webster Street Park will share $100,000. And the breakdowns, I'm not sure, both those parks are in Mount Pleasant, and so based on what they feel the needs are, they'll break that down. But it may be 50/50, but it may be a little, maybe 60/40, but between the two of them, they will share $100,000. And additionally, there's been $25,800 set aside to do benches and fencing in parks that is needed. So that is how the allocation this year of $250,000 through the Recreation Advisory Commission has been recommended to spend. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Mr. Ferrari.
From the New York State Department of Public Service, the North American Numbering Plan Administrator, it's the entity that administers area codes, has advised that the 518 area code could be out of assignable telephone numbers by the end of the first quarter of 2019. Therefore, the department is going to be conducting a series of informational sessions and a public statement hearing to seek input and comments from the community. There's a meeting that's going to be held locally on Thursday, July 28th, at Colony Town Hall. At 12 noon, there's going to be the informational session followed by the 1:00 PM public statement hearing. And additional information regarding the 518 area code relief proceeding can be found on the department's website at www.dps.ny.gov. Thanks.
Any other committee reports? Okay. We're on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have four people signed up to speak this evening. The first is Mary McLean.
Good evening to the smart city folks. Agenda item number four, authorize the mayor to apply for New York State funds for Mohawk Harbor Visitor Center. I can understand why the city would want to apply for funds for anything, but I don't think the Mohawk Harbor is the right place for a visitor center. People who go to gamble in casinos are not interested in other things. When I ran for City Council in 2013, Sarah Foss wrote in one of her columns that she had attended the candidates debate in Proctor's Theater and not one of the candidates had a vision for the city. That was not an accurate statement. I did have a vision for Schenectady. That vision was to turn the Way Station on Broadway into a visitor station and run it like a Colonial Williamsburg mini-operation. I lived in that area for 10 years. I was bringing my experience to the city. Secondly, my vision for the Mohawk River was an aquarium. At the last meeting, a councilman mentioned that Genoa is the leading smart city in Italy. Genoa has an aquarium. My relatives live in Genoa. I have visited them and the aquarium. What an incredible tourist attraction. This area's going to have an aquarium. Europeans brought it here. Rotterdam will house it. Schenectady got their non-vision council members. The Mohawk Harbor is no place for a visitor center. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor, on the agenda itself for the taxi cab moratoriums, we still need to have an assessment of how many of the medallions that have accessible taxicabs. Under Title II of the ADA and Americans with Disabilities Act, you're required to make sure that all government programs, services, and activities that you guys regulate are made accessible. And we need to know exactly how many of the taxicabs are there that are accessible with the ramps and so forth that are built into it. We also need to know exactly how many of these taxicabs that are outside the area that would come in. So we need to know exactly from that. Those are some of the things, because we've got to be able to understand how we can go from here, from Schenectady, to the airport. To give you an example, going from the airport, from my house to the airport, if I go from Schenectady to the airport, it costs me $30. If I go from the airport to back home, it costs me $18 and some change. The difference is, it's a flat rate coming out of Schenectady, whereas it's metered coming out of Albany at the airport. So I'm saving over $12, almost $12, by having the meter itself. So these are some of the things that need to be taken a look at when you're looking at having no meters. The Medicaid cabs, yes, they need the medallions. Again, you have a duty and responsibility to the citizens within the city of Schenectady. So being not able to check to see if these Medicaid cabs are up to par, you're not going to be able to know. So yes, you need to be able to regulate them under the ADA Title II. That's where you've got your authority. And then also too is that under the visitor center and the docks, we're supposed to have a cost-benefit analysis of what's happening. How much money is the developer putting in? How much is the grant? And how many jobs are going to be produced by it? We haven't gotten any of that information. The state compt controller asked in 2009 and said that Ray Gillen falsified the documents. You can pull it up through the Gazette paper. In 2015, the state compt controller did another audit, said that Ray Gillen was falsifying the documents again, both reported in the Gazette and the Times Union. There hasn't been a cost-benefit analysis. And the money that's going in for this dock and everything else, Metroplex is putting in the share. How much of that share? We have no clue. So you guys are voting on this tonight, not even knowing how much money's where or what the cost-benefit analysis is. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Delamater.
Good evening. I'm Carol Delamater from 20 Washington Ave, and I'm coming to speak on behalf of the residents of the Stokke regarding the resolutions about fireworks. I would say the week before, the 4th, there was a lot of discussion in the Neighborhood Yahoo Group about fireworks and the issues that neighbors were raising. So I'm actually just coming here in support of the council's sort of efforts to work with the county or with the state to curb the use of illegal fireworks that pose a fire hazard in an urban neighborhood such as the Stokke where destruction of historic homes would be tragic. Also related to injury to neighbors who may use legal or illegal devices is also a concern. So we support your efforts, including enforcement, public service announcements, while in advance of July 4th, about what would be considered legal, safe use, and any ordinances that can be enforced for noise, et cetera. So we thank you for your effort to do that.
Thank you. Pete Dvoras.
I do not support the resolution for the agreement between the Museum of Innovation and Science with Vale Park. I don't see any contiguous entrance there. And in fact, I think the Union College Cemetery might be in the way, and I might remind all of you, in case you don't remember, the pavilion there has been set fire to twice. Another thing, I had to buy a Times Union the other week, and I noticed the price has gone up to $1.50, except that it says $2 in outlying areas. So I figured this must be an outlying area, since some people are referring to fireworks as sparklers. The other night, the boom factor was, it was absolutely way off the screen. I've been there 17 years. I'm accustomed to people breaking these laws, but the boom factor, I came outside, I ended up at Veterans Park. From Veterans Park, I could see four different locations in Hamilton Hill where they were setting off fireworks. I mean elevation, this was not Roman candles or anything of that nature. Four sites in Hamilton Hill. There were another two sites over around Bran Brankin and the college area. And then I went back to my humble abode, which out of my window from the second floor, I can see directly over to where the Proctor is. I don't know how they were doing it, but fireworks were right up in the air. I thought they must have been firing from the front step of the Proctor, but maybe it was the parking lot there, Dakota Avenue or wherever. That does face, have a Hamilton Hill frontage to. But that's a lot of fireworks, so it's not just sparklers. But yes, thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I will declare this portion of the meeting closed. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda, moved by Mr. Ferrari, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren. All those in favor, aye. And I'll ask clerk to reread agenda number eight, excuse me, agenda item number eight, pulled for roll call.
Agenda number eight, a resolution requesting Schenectady County legislators to repeal the law allowing sale of fireworks in Schenectady.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Motion in a second.
I'm sorry. I need a motion. Mr. Riggi, second. Mr. Ferrari, all those in favor, aye. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Kosher.
Yes.
Ms. Porterfield.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Palamene.
Yes.
Mr. Riggi.
Yes.
Mr. Mutiveren.
Thank you. I just raise, I raise a support this resolution, but I just want to mention a few things why we are working with the county to repeal this ordinance. I mean, we have had our fair share this year. We see what's happening. Some of our neighborhood have turned into a war zone. People have been using illegal fireworks instead of the legal sparklers, causing a lot of safety concerns. And it's not, it's not safe for our neighborhood, especially the seniors and the people who have animals. And we have seen a fire in Amsterdam, what damage has happened here, and even a couple years ago in our own neighborhood here. So we are working with the county to repeal this, and I hope that the county will work with us to repeal it so that we can bring some safety concern to our residents in Schenectady. And I voted ayes.
Ms. Parazo.
Yes.
Affirmative, 6, 0, and 1 abstention.
Okay, we'll move on to privilege of the floor regarding, excuse me, general city business. And I have seven people signed up to speak. The first is Anthony Carrata.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Madam President. For argument to speak on what I'm going to speak on tonight, I'd just like to applaud this council, an effort of trying to deal with one of the major quality life issues, the fireworks, and working with your counterpart and the county legislator about that. I applaud your effort of trying to deal with that quality life issue. Now, hence my sign. While I want to speak on, I hope, and hasn't happened here yet, this war and attack on our police and law enforcement officers on all three levels, federal, state, and local. Ferguson, New York City, Baltimore, recently Dallas, Louisiana, Montana. All it is is police officers doing their job. Doing the public, for whatever reason, disregards their life, disrespects them. As a law-abiding citizen, I respect all law enforcement on all three levels, as any law-abiding citizen should. The other thing about this law, this war and attack on our police force and our law enforcement officers, is the fact that when they get a call, no matter what the call is, they don't know if it's going to be for a hostage situation, shootout, what have you. They've got to prepare themselves. So normally, us civilians would get injured. They would get injured also. They're the ones that stick their necks out, risk their lives every single day. And that's just to protect us citizens, this government body, whether it be local government body, the mayor, president, governor. The law enforcement officers are out there constantly, 24/70, 365 days a year, because as Judge Jeanne Perle was saying in the program, the police have a thin line to protect from things going chaotic to really chaos. Thing is that within this law, an attack on the law enforcement is the people in the community are believing in a lie. The biggest lie is, because of who they are, they think the police are out to get them. Lie, that does not happen. Police are not out to get anybody. The other thing is that they think their life matters more than everybody else. Everybody's life matters. They've got to stop doing this thing and stop attacking the police and law enforcement officers, because as a law-abiding citizen, as I've said numerous times here, I respect all law enforcement. This war and attack on our law enforcement and police have been going on for far too long. It's time this council starts doing something to protect our law enforcement officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor, two weeks ago, we had mentioned that the community needs assessment, and it'll be due on July 15th. One of the questions is that the Democratic Party's been in control for the last 12 years, 12 and a half years. You guys have super majorities. You have over five votes which can override the mayor's veto if the mayor decides to veto it. The City Council, I mean, the county legislatures, you've got the four, you've got the six county ledge that are the city representatives. All of them, all of them are in leadership positions except for one leader position. One has the majority leader, one has the vice chair, one has the deputy chair, and one of our representatives is the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. In that 12 and a half years, we have not seen affirmative action, nor have we seen jobs created. You guys have the power, but you're not enforcing it. And that's where the problem is, and that's where we need to take a look at. You have the roundabout that just went into effect, over $3 million of federal money. You had Erie Boulevard that went into effect, over $15 million of federal money. You're building houses that are townhouses that are not even affordable nor accessible. I mean, we have this, what's going in a city, you're creating a microcosm of a get-rich-area and screw the rest of the neighborhoods. And that's the problem that we've got. And until you can start addressing the needs of the community, we're going to continue to have it. The Gazette and the Times Union just reported, out of 215 cities, we ranked number 213 in the highest crime rate in the state. There's only 12 cities that are stronger than us. The only other city that's stronger, that's worse than us is Albany, and they were ranked at 2, about 213 or so. So, you know, I mean, what's going on? We have to be able to create jobs. And if we don't, we're going to continue this pathway. You're saying we have to hire more officers. We don't need to hire more officers. If we create more jobs, it means less people are on the thing. And if we create more homeownership, which is what HUD's requiring, in some of our neighborhoods, we're only at 40% homeownership rate. In order to stabilize the community, you need to be at 60% homeownership rate. But if we keep building non-accessible houses, where are we going to be at? We're going to be in the same worst condition that we are. Also too is that, where's that $2.5 million? It went into the general fund, but where is that money actually going? You know, that's where we've never had accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
I went to church on Saturday, lit candles, prayed for the world, and meditated on last week's events. I am the oldest of seven siblings. My baby brother is a retired policeman. He was on the police force for 20 years. One day, while walking his beat alone, two women ran out of a bank and told him a robbery was in progress inside the bank. Without waiting for backup, he went inside. Shots were fired both ways. Burglar and officer survived. My brother was cited for bravery. Locally, a while back, the city's councilwoman trampled a crime scene after the police had courted it off. What is the answer? I try to do what I can for the policeman, even if it's just a wave, a smile, a hello. The last community act that I performed before I left Virginia was to attend a City Council meeting to ask for a salary increase for the policeman. I didn't need to be there. I was leaving the state. But the policemen were earning peanuts, and the city was flushed with money. In 1969, the city finished its fiscal year with $5 million in surplus money. I told the council they had more money than they had time to spend it, and that the policemen were getting crumbs from the heavily laden banquet table. I don't know if the police got their raises, but I felt I had done my part to say thank you for what they do for us every day. We all have stories. That is mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Miller.
Hi, my name's Charles Miller.
Hi, my name's Charles Miller, and I live at 211 Wabash Avenue. And my next door neighbor lives in a corner house on Genesee in Wabash. Late August of 2015, she had her sidewalk blacktopped completely around the corner and in front of her house, which is against city code and city ordinance. And Vince followed up on it, and she was issued a citation, and nothing has ever been done about it. I went this spring down here, and I asked about it, and they said it takes a lot of time. So I've asked again. I've been here several times through to code enforcement and engineering, and they just give me the runaround and say, "We're working on it." Three weeks ago, she had her sidewalk seal coated. My question is, is this going to go on forever? Is anybody can blacktop their sidewalk? Mine is concrete. That's all I have to say.
Tony Benone.
Tony Benone Bellevue. First of all, I came down a couple of weeks ago to pay my taxes. In the back of City Hall, the parking meters on the other side of the street where you put the money in, I put half a dollar in to come in and pay my taxes. The meter was broken. It was right near the corner of Lafayette, uh, Liberty here. It's either meter 119, 118, or 117. So if they could take a look at that. I was hoping, I kept my fingers crossed I didn't get a ticket, but... Secondly, what did we hear on Oak Street? Have they met with the railroad? I mean, the last meeting we had, you brought it up, Ms. Parrazo, and that corporate council told you that they were discussing money or something like that? I think you brought that up at the end of the meeting, if I'm not mistaken? That's been going on for six, eight mon- over six months. Last year, that's all I heard was, "They're discussing money or something." So I wish we could get this straightened out, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Delamater.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the Stockade Association. This weekend is our Stockade Garden Tour, and it is featuring art by local artists in every garden. I'm sure you saw some of the descriptions in Sunday's Gazette, but we want you to make sure you focus on the excellent art that we're going to have by many professionals, including group, those from groups like Oak Room Artists. Art in the garden makes this a very unique garden tour for those being offered in the community, so we, we hope that folks will come out and support it. It includes two sculptures, one by George Ricky and one by Ken Armitage. And it will be a busy weekend here in the Stockade with many visitors, including folks coming through from the Erie Canal Bike Tour that's coming from Buffalo to Albany. So the Stockade and public gardens will be on display. So we want to thank the City Park folks that have, that have always been, supported us with mowing and picking up the trash, and we also want to thank the many volunteers and the sponsors of this event who make this possible. This year, the Stockade Association has spent several thousand dollars on public gardens in Riverside Park and at Lawrence Indian. We contribute to all the doggy bags that keep the neighborhood safe, and we continue as an organization to raise issues on preservation and provide support for street skate improvements, especially options for residents improving sidewalks in this very walkable neighborhood. So we invite all of you to come on Saturday or on Friday afternoon or on Saturday and walk around the streets, stop by our information table, and perhaps buy a ticket. We welcome your attendance and support at this event. And I have...
Thank you. Petey Vorus.
I was at a Metroplex meeting, and I was reminded that the city in Metroplex gave, paid Cal Harbor Associates $20,000 to do this architectural work for the sidewalks from Erie to Ferry. That's a very short distance. I don't see why we have to have contracts let out for each block of sidewalk that's being done. I know we've got these vaults in the streets, but that was taken care of, to my recollection, a long time ago by the grid and also when Procter was doing their heat system. So I think somebody really needs to check on that. Also, many times I've complained about, there's a parade of people that drive wheelchairs, and they like to go on Liberty Street and go under the trestle on the wrong side of the street into blind traffic. It's terrible, and nobody talks about that. But it's also been, since before we had the big fire here on J Street, that an 18-wheeler came barreling down Liberty Street, and the sign says, "No higher than 11 foot 1 inch." That trailer was higher, and it went under and went about 10, 10 feet before it stopped, and its roof was peeled back. Well, since the cab was shorter than the trailer, the driver appropriately unhooked his cab and took off. So in the meantime, somebody called somebody, and we had a photographer from the Gazette there, and I'm watching him. He took like 100 pictures of this trailer stuck, stuck under there, and then we watched as somebody pulled, oh, the cab driver came back. He had gone to his company and called to see what to do about this. So they sent somebody out to pull the tractor trailer back out, but there were over 100 pictures taken. Not a one appeared in the, in the Gazette, not a single one I was looking for. But we only got the story because somebody raised the issue of the safety of the trains on that overpass, and that was the only recognition of it. Also, Skates, Yates Street, very small street, there's nothing there except a cat that ran for mayor and lost, but that street has been repaved, sidewalk and new curbing, when we were promised that we would get sidewalks and re-curbing on Van Franken.
I'll lead you to someone.
What happened with that project? Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I will declare the privilege of the floor closed and move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to remind everyone the Mont Carmel Festa is this coming weekend, the 15th, 16th, and 17th. It's always a great time, as is St. Anthony's, and there's still some of the old timers are left. Mrs. Mareska and Mrs. Marquito, I'm sure they'll be doing their thing along with all the other help, so it's, it's a nice festa, and there's a lot to do there. I want to remind people of that. Bellevue and the Park this year is August 13th, Saturday, the second Saturday in August, and the 14th is the rain date. I believe that's either the 19th or 20th here for that event, so that's good. I want to thank all the city staff, especially the operating engineers for the cleanup and the repairs done in our parks. I was over at Hillhurst Monday morning, and the overhang kind of shelter where they feed the free lunches for the kids, that got damaged, but Rich Walzniak was there and Bob Dafini, and they, they came to the conclusion that it could be repaired, which is good. Just one of the posts was bent, and a couple of the purlings had to be replaced. They're all steel. I think that's why it held up that well. It wasn't wood. So we lost the roof, but they were steel panels, so that can be repaired. Fairview Park did, uh, did sustain quite a bit of damage to one of the fences on the tennis courts, but that's getting cleaned up now, so that's good. So overall, they've done a good job. That was something that just came out of the blue, that storm, and we did, we had a lot of damage, Central Park and all, a lot of our parks on top of everything else. A lot of trees went down, so it's, it's good to see city staff came together. Good job by the administration getting things going and getting things cleaned up and back to normal. That's an extra strain, but it's something that just happens, and there's nothing you can do about it. But I am happy that we have some good operating engineers in the city garage, good welders. These guys do work that a lot of times we don't know about, repairing snowplows and things like that, and it's, it's really, their service is invaluable to keep our, our machinery going and a lot of our structures going. So it's good that we have people like that with that kind of expertise, and I just wanted to give them a shout out for the good job that they do. Thank you.
Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I'd also like to also to thank the leadership and the workers in the Parks Department for the outstanding job that they did. Mr. Riggi really explained all that was going on, and so it was quite the storm, and they did a good job jumping right in there and getting it taken care of. I'd like to say thanks to the Affirmative Action Advisory Board for having, for hosting Rivers Casino to come and provide an informational session last week regarding MWBE's Minority Women Business Enterprises working with, with the entity. Just wanted to remind folks that Breathing Lights Project is going, going to be taking place. The actual putting in of the lights will be over the next period, uh, of the next few months, and then the lights will go on. Leading up to that, though, there will be surveys that will be taken. So you'll be encountering the ambassadors who will be going around the neighborhoods, taking surveys, asking people how they feel about the Breathing Lights Project, how they feel about their neighborhood, and it's not confined to one neighborhood. The houses are spread over various neighborhoods throughout the city. So you may have a neighborhood ambassador coming up to you asking about how you feel about the neighborhood. So we just encourage people to take the opportunity to answer that survey. We'll be doing a post, a pre-survey, a during survey, and then a post-survey. So it's going to be a, a period of time over which they'll be doing this. This Friday is summer night here in downtown Schenectady. From 5:00 PM, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, there will be entertainment, there'll be vendors. It's for those who have never attended, can't imagine how many people that could possibly be. Most people have been, I'm sure. It's quite an evening of fun and, you know, a time for families to come and just really to have a good time in downtown Schenectady. So we just encourage people to come out and enjoy themselves, and at the end, there'll be fireworks that will be done by professionals of the MVP Building. So we ask people to come out for that. I just want to, you know, talk about what's really going on in our nation right now. I think that, for me anyway, it's difficult to realize the tragedies that have happened and not just, you know, talk about how it impacts families, how it impacts our community, how it impacts our world. Seven people, Alton Sterling, Philando Castillo, Officer Brett Thompson, Officer Lauren Hearns, Officer Patrick Zamarepa, Officer Michael Smith, and Officer Michael Kroll. Those seven lives are entwined, whether we want to think about it that way or not. And as a community, there's going to be a community conversation this Wednesday at Mount Olivet Baptist Church, but just to talk about what's going on and how it impacts us and how it impacts our children, because the kind of world that we live in now, it's just not where it happens, because the minute something happens, whether you see it on the internet or you're seeing on TV, it impacts our children, it impacts our community. So the community conversation is going to take place, just for people to talk about what's going on, how it, how it impacts us, and I encourage folks to come, to listen, to, to talk to each other. So this, this coming Wednesday at 7:00 PM at Mount Olivet Missionary Baptist Church at 1068 Park Avenue, the community conversation will take place. Thank you.
Mr. Palamene.
The issue of fireworks, obviously, is a very serious issue. However, the resolution to ask the county to repeal these sparklers really isn't going to address the issue, unfortunately. The real issue is the illegal fireworks. Those are things that are impacting all of us and really hurting the quality of life of our city. First, the people who are really interested in purchasing sparklers are continue, going to continue to purchase those. They're going to go to the surrounding counties and purchase them. Secondly, the real issue, again, is the illegal fireworks, and the resolution just didn't address that, and that's why I abstained. We can really just sit here and continue to studiously say nothing, nothing that actually shows you think. But the issue in that method really isn't worthy of Schenectady. It's time for us to really start writing a new book, a new chapter. That's why I introduced the resolution to ask the governor and the attorney general and the superintendent of the state troopers to strongly enforce the law. Now that it's been unanimously passed, I will be contacting urban centers around the state, sending them the resolution and asking them to pass similar resolution and put pressure on the governor, the attorney general, and the superintendent to actually enforce these laws and enforce the laws of moving the fireworks across state lines, marketing, and the actual sales. This actually may have an impact unless the state repeals the law, which is very unlikely. So with that in mind, hopefully, other urban centers will also pass similar resolutions, and we can pressure the governor as well as other state officials to enforce the law. Should you want to, you could call the governor's office at 474-8390. That's the governor's office, it's 474-8390. They're open from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and you can contact the attorney general in Albany at 776-2000. Again, that's 776-2000. And I would really encourage everybody who has issues, which I think everybody in this body does, have an issue with the illegal fireworks, to take that up. Also, I would like to really look at and commend the mayor, as well as the staff, as well as the city employees, for the work they did with the trees in Central Park as well as Hillhurst. I went through the parks, both parks, as well as Fairview, a couple times a day, just looking at the amount of trees that were down. It was really impressive what the weather did. It shows the force of, of nature, and the amount of destruction of the trees was incredible, and just how quick the staff really went about things and got things cleaned up was amazing. They really should be commended, as well as the mayor. So thank you very much.
Other business. Anyone? Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to compliment the staff for their response a week ago, Friday night, the storm damage, police department, fire department, our Bureau of Service, and also just residents who came out and helped their neighbors in terms of removing branches, cutting things up, moving it out. And I think we generally have pretty much all the tree debris cleaned up. There may be still a little bit out there that crews are working on to get removed, and we'll do that again in a timely fashion. There was some damage to buildings, lost the vending stand in Central Park, some of the ones in Hillhurst, and again, some of that were filing insurance claims and having the crews map out, again, either reconstruction or repair of those facilities. Mentioned next Friday night is summer night. It's always a great community event where people come out, get to see some old friends, hopefully make some new friends, and enjoy some music, great food, and community camaraderie. hopefully make some new friends, and enjoy some music, great food, and community camaraderie. Wanted to thank Angie Morris and the Human Rights Commission for sponsoring a community forum tonight at the Bridge Christian Church with Reverend Buckout. Again, continues the dialogue that is ongoing, not only in Schenectady but across the country, that Councilmember Porterfield also talked about Reverend Sanders and Mount Olivet Church will have a forum this Wednesday night. And hopefully it'll show Schenectady, again, as a leader in that, where we're looking to build on our strengths and not play off our differences and create animosity and tension where it doesn't need to exist, because we've seen just a series of tragic events across the country. And I'll tell you, they can happen anyplace at any time. And I think we're fortunate here, where a number of years ago, we've started a much more detailed and in-depth background check and screening process for the hiring of police officers, where it's a complicated job, it's a challenging job, and we want our employees to have that skill set, to have the tools, to have the training to be able to respond to any situation. And they do, on a daily basis, really perform at a level that should make the residents of this community proud. We saw that again a week ago Friday with our paramedics, with the fire department, with the police responding. It's not a shooting situation, but a natural disaster again can challenge people and put people's lives at risk just as much as some of the other events. And so I can compliment the staff, thank the residents of the city, and again, we look forward to trying to make Schenectady a stronger and better community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Last Friday, the governor rode his motorcycle, which I didn't know he was a motorcycle rider, but he rode his motorcycle from Albany to Buffalo, and that was to raise awareness for new legislation that had passed at the end of session. So I want to make sure all of our viewers know about it. In polling women as to why they did not get their regular screening for breast cancer, there were two factors that they stated. One was time and one was money. So the new legislation has the requirement of our clinics and our hospitals staying open at least four hours outside of normal, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5 business hours, so evening hours and weekend hours. And also now, all mammograms or any follow-up screenings that are necessary, there is absolutely no copay. So there's no excuse to get screened and get your mammogram annually. Also, this Thursday in Vale Park, we did have a rain day last Friday, so our family movie night will be this Thursday, 7:30, free ice cream, free popcorn. We'll be playing the Minions movie, and it'll be a great night, so come and join us for that. Goose Hill Family Fun Day is July 23rd, and I believe that starts at 1:00 PM. And with regard to the Oak Street Bridge, it wasn't about money, Mr. Benone. What it was, was that we were waiting for Amtrak to get back to us with some changes that we made. They did get back to us. We needed to make some more changes. We've already made those changes, gotten them to Amtrak, and I believe Corporation Council followed up with them today to see what their view of those changes was. So it's more honing the plan of the Oak Street Bridge, and I know that we're on it very diligently, and I believe we're in the final stages at this point. Do we not, do we want to cross our fingers and say that? But we're moving in a forward direction.
Moving in forward for the mayor's direction.
Yep. And lastly, we had a couple of pretty serious accidents on Broadway over the course of a day or two. And I just want to remind everyone to please pull over for emergency vehicles. That interchange with 890 and Broadway and emergency vehicles getting through that corridor at rush hour or whatever the case may be is really quite challenging. So please, 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 do your best to get as far over that you can so that our emergency vehicles all over the city, all over the country really, can get by safely. And that is all. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Ferrari, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all's in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.